I'd like to call this board meeting to order. We are here today at the Aquiline and Howell Center. It is January 22nd, and this is our business meeting. We're going to start the meeting by honoring and recognizing some students. We have a student from Riley Elementary School who's going to lead us in the pledge, Darcia Graham. So, Darcia, could you come forward? I'm sure I got that right. Wait a minute. Something different on here.
She's not here?
I have Kamarian Bostic, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, please. And you're going to do both, and I'm sorry, there's a little mix up there, but we're so happy to have you here.
I've pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you.
My name is Kamarian Bostic, and I'm going to be giving the thought for today. The thought for today is, don't compare yourself with others. Instead, recognize what makes you happy, and often your energies are in doing that well.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just add that among his school activities, he's a Riley ambassador, and his honors are, he was selected as one of our MLK Dreamers and Doers, and he has a citizenship award, and he's been on the honor roll, and his interests are the new birth house of Praise Youth Ministry, volunteers feeding the homeless, and he aspires to become a firefighter or a state trooper. So let's give him another hand, Kamarian Bostic. And I see that his principals here, and maybe some of my parents and relatives, would you all please stand and be recognized by the board for your contribution to Kamarian?
Good, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did really mean to interrupt, but you do know that Riley is down the Tharp Street corridor.
Welcome!
Thank you.
And with that welcome, we will also say, we know that you may have homework to do tonight, Kamarian, and so you and your parents and your principal are all relieved to go home and do that. You're welcome to stay, but we understand if you need to go. So thank you very much for coming.
Good job.
Next, we have changes and additions. Ms. Rasmussen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The superintendent is recommending the following changes and additions for this evening's meeting. Item 17.01 will be pulled. This was the Cook Brothers' WT Moore School Chiller, and the summary was not submitted included on the agenda. Item 7.03, approval of personnel actions, had some replaced documentations and changed information for the public content to reflect this change. And on item 19.02, the item is being pulled, the superintendent recommends approval, would have recommended approval of the proposed amendment to the 1819 capital outlay budget, but we will take that up at another time.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm the approved agenda for the changes and additions.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Bowen, second, and by Ms. Tripplin. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It passes. Next is the superintendent's spotlight.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to bring to the podium Kathleen Malloy, who, among many other things, works with our school media specialists. We would like to recognize someone special tonight for an award, a state award that they recently received. Ms. Malloy.
Thank you. We actually have several recognitions, and this was a really big deal to be first in the state. We were at the Fame, the Florida Association of Media Educators Conference, and anytime we get to brag on our teachers, principals, students, it's a good day. So the first person I'd like to brag on, you've already bragged on, because first in the state was Billy Millard, and he was recognized by his media specialist Karen Young. Billy, would you stand, please? And Karen, would you stand, please? If you haven't been out to Buck Lake, you are missing an absolutely vibrant, exciting, active media center with all of the things that Karen has done and Billy supports, and that's what he won for. He is the Principal's Advocate Award winner for the entire state for elementary.
That's wonderful.
And so the entry Karen had to submit was just a couple of hundred words, and so it was really hard for her to pare that down. But the quote that is the most outstanding to me, and knowing Billy, we all know, he is absolutely, and I quote, "shameless about doing anything and everything he can to get children to read."
That's great.
Thank you, Billy. Secondly, a teacher and student. So a collaboration effort. So I'm wearing my special media center, or media specialist t-shirt today because we are no longer just book checker-outers. We work with all kinds of technology, and a big role that we have in schools is collaboration. So a collaboration effort that succeeded in winning first place in the six through eight book trailer awards was at Monford with Kathy Drake. Her English teacher Joyce Mattson, who's not here, and with Sue, sue, help me with your name, Sue, Sue. The student, Sue Schu, right. And Sue won. She's here with her family, and she won first place for a book trailer for a book entitled, "The War That Saved My Life." And if you know anything about the book, it's really very moving, very poignant, and it's about World War II, and she did a lovely job with it, absolutely lovely. The awards that she won for are called the Jim Harbin Awards, and the Jim Harbin Awards are extremely difficult to win in any area, and they've been working, Kathy, how many years, three years now?
I think we just finished our fourth.
Just finished their fourth year to even make a place. That's how stiff the competition is, so we're very, very excited about that.
Wow. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have, we don't have recognition, so we're going to move to item five, 5.01, District Advisory Council, Duana Moore.
Yeah, real quick before we go there, so I made many stops before I came to sit in this chair. One of them was to Kathy Drake's house. I'll never forget that. Wow, those, yeah, they're a tough group, but so passionate about what they do in our district media centers and all of our schools, and so thankful to you, Kathy, and all the other district and school media specialists that are here today, and you're right, not just...
Remember, you were sitting there.
Yeah, I was, I did not bail on you. I stuck it out. I'm not sure how long it lasts, but there was, and I've been through a lot, I went through a lot of debates and a lot of forums, candidate forums, but that was the most grueling experience I ever could have ever asked for. But really, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate all that you do, and I know I speak for this board as well, and you're not just book checker-outers, you're many things to many people. And so Mr. Millard and all the rest of you who are recognized tonight, congratulations.
Yes. And this is Duana Moore, giving our report for the District Advisory Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our District Advisory Council meeting was held on January 10th, 2019, here in the Howell Center. Our meeting started with a welcome and comments from the superintendent. He came and he welcomed us, and he thanked us for our service, and then he opened the floor for questions, and that's when the party started.
Lit up like a Christmas tree, and it wasn't even Christmas.
It did. It was amazing, but a lot of questions were answered, and he was willing, most definitely, to stay in answer and address everyone's concerns, and we thank you for that, Mr. Superintendent. And then we had greetings from our District III School Board member, Mr. Darrell Jones. He came and introduced his two at-large representatives, Mr. Marcus Nicholas and Kristic Henry. We thanked you for coming to join us that evening. The night was so special that we had two best practices. We usually have one, but the first one came from Hartsfield, and they wanted to talk about their second annual parent and family engagement conference. Dr. Rhonda Flanagan gave an overview of the conference. She talked about how the conference includes business partners, a panel discussion, vendors, workshops for children ages third through fifth grade, and it also includes lunch. The conference was so successful last year that they extended the conference to a two-day conference, and it's going to be held this year on January 25th, which is a Friday, and Saturday, the 26th. Then our second best practice came from Sable Palm Elementary School. Ms. Robinson, the principal, and Anna K. Hutchinson, community partnership school director, they've been working on this project to make Sable Palm a community partnership school for the past two years, two and a half years, as a matter of fact. They gave us the information and how long the process was. They also wanted to thank Dr. Gail for all of her assistance through this tedious process. Then we had Mr. Manny Joannis come with transportation and give us an update on the new Edgelog routing system. Mr. Manny Joannis provided an update on rebuilding a 10-year-old system. He said that the new system will provide navigation software for drivers, which will provide for efficiency, as well as help subs with the route, reduce driver vacancy, provide real-time student ridership, and this is the part that we as parents really love, provide a parent portal app, which will allow the parents to see when the student gets on or off the bus, and maximize the utilization, route management, and efficiency. So we thanked Mr. Joannis for coming out and bringing us that information. Last but not least, we had a lot of things on the agenda, but we really had to cut it and table some things until our next meeting. But we talked about school choice with Ms. Jamie Holloman. She provided information on how parents can apply for school choice this year. It is on the Focus app. She also talked about those who have never enrolled in Leon County schools can apply online. They don't have a parent portal or Focus app sign in, so they would apply online. And the deadline to apply for school choice is March 1st, and that's where we had to stop our meeting. Our next meeting is February 7th, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I want to say to the audience, there are some empty seats up front, and I see one over there, so if anyone needs to come in and sit, I see a lot of you are standing back there. Children, come sit on the floor if you want to, and I see a few more seats are opening up, so if you're out in the hallway, please come on in and have a seat. We don't have to just stand the whole meeting. Next, we'll have our student District Advisory Council, Abigail Hansen.
Good evening.
So at our previous meeting on January 9th, we solidified the requirements for our swap days, including what forms would be required for each school, because they did in fact wind up differing a little bit. And we discussed further the SGA Olympics that Leon High School has organized, which consists of a melding of different student governments to create teams that will then have playful competition against one another in rather a wonderful idea that Leon actually came up with and brought to us all. We then, due to the fact that our swap days were coming up, and they were fully planned and organized, I felt that a discussion regarding the new administration of our states entering in, at the time, that reading over some of Governor DeSantis's positions on education could bring forth some very interesting conversation pieces. And we had some intense and fascinating discussions that went on regarding that for a period of time until its conclusion, until the meeting's conclusion. Howsoever, I would also like to note that today was the first of our school swap days, which is the program that I had come forward regarding to you all earlier, in which schools from, students from different schools would be able to attend another school for a day. And today, we had students from Leon High School at Godbe, students from Childs at Rickards, and students from Lincoln at my homeschool Sale. And I believe everyone truly enjoyed their time today, and I look forward immensely to hearing all of their responses. I did have the pleasure of hearing one individual refer to Godbe as being, quote, "Leon, but blue," which I found to be quite entertaining. So I very much look forward to tomorrow, on which I will be able to attend Lincoln, and several other students will be swapping. And then, following up on our February 13th meeting, we will be able to explore further, and for that month, when I come to visit you all, I will have far more to report on, and I very much look forward to that as well. Thank you all.
Abigail, thank you very much for your report. It's a great idea and what you're doing. I think we're all really excited about the results of that.
Thank you, and so who represents the Mikkasuki Street corridor, right? You have Sullivan, Cobb, Leon, right? So Godbe's Leon but blue. I like it.
Yes, that's cute.
I like it, too. Next, we have the Title I Advisory Council. I see Marie Corleone, and I see Talithia Edwards. Are you going to give us our report tonight, Talithia? Great, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Glad to be here tonight. Marie and I co-chair the Title I Advisory Council, and she has been holding it down for me while we were over in the Bond community creating our Neighborhood First Plan, so I'm here tonight. We had our last Title I Advisory Council meeting on January 14th at Woodville K-8 School, really, really great school. That was my first time visiting the school. But we've had a lot of conversation in the Title I Advisory Council about exactly what was our direction, where we were going. We ended up really, really strong last year when we did our presentation to the board and bought a few considerations, and we wanted to keep that same momentum. We started back meeting in our groups, but at the last meeting, we took a different direction, and we wanted to set some priorities that we thought we could really make some leeway on, and so we narrowed our priorities down from 12 to two. And those two are incentives to attract and retain Title I teachers. With doing that, we want to look at other districts who are actually using their Title I dollars to attract and retain Title I teachers for that purpose. We know that's a big conversation in our schools. There was an ad hoc committee created to do a cost analysis. We know that that's going to be the question, what is this going to cost us? Where will all the money come from? So we have individuals who are looking into that. Our second big one was early education in the pre-K programs. That was one of the big things we left on the table last year, was looking at our early education, and what can we do to help kids be more prepared as they enter kindergarten? So we wanted to spend our time kind of galvanizing and bringing to the table the early childhood education players. So one of our community partners that attends the Title I Advisory Council is Whole Child Leon, and so they're going to help convene the group of the Office of Early Learning, Kids Incorporated, so everyone, so that conversation can be collective, and we won't be having that conversation in a silo, and we would love continue engagement from the board on that. Next, interwoven into all three is the racial equity lens. We cannot talk about anything that's happening in Title I schools without talking about race and equity and how it's affecting the schools. So instead of that being a priority, which it was, one separate group, we're now using that lens to inform all the things that we do with these two priorities. The next thing, which is kind of a third, but not a third, was the Title I feeder pattern. So you are fostering communication between the Title I schools, which is excellent. Last week, we had the meeting with Conley, Fairview, and Rickards, which I attended, and it was amazing. Would love to see more things happen like that in our school, so that we have a smoother transition, and we know what we're going into from each school. So we wanted to continue to focus on that. Also, let me read my paper so I can stay on track and I don't get off track. I'll end this with one biggest thing. Last year, we brought to the committee reducing classroom sizes, and one thing, want to thank Ms. Gregory and her team, they hurt us. And so with the School Improvement Grant, many schools have seen classroom reduction. And so that's the kind of collaboration the Title I Advisory Council want to have with the board and with the district, that we're able to come with, you know, what we see the concerns and the needs are, and that you all hear us, and we can see, and we can say that we're just not, you know, spinning our wheels, that we're actually getting some things done. So a big thank you to Ms. Gregory, and also Ms. Scott, who's helping us stay on track, right? Make sure that we're not, you know, all trying to do our own things, but that we have the proper documentation, that we are following in guidelines of what the districts see as important. So we'll report at the next agenda meeting about those cost analysis, and our next meeting is on February 11th at Godbe. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that the Title I Committee and its subcommittee dealing with early learning participate in what will be our upcoming workshop. We're workshopping the issue relative to early learning at my behest from last meeting. I'm getting with Assistant Superintendent Gail and the superintendent to convene that workshop with the principals already who are responsible for that here at the school district, but also bringing in to bear those players that you've described, the Early Learning Coalition, some already operating Early Learning Development Centers that are doing this work in an extraordinary way, and all of that can be reconciled. And I think if we were to bring your Early Learning Committee, I think there's also our Early Learning Subcommittee with the District Advisory Committee, bringing all those committees to bear. to bear as a part of that workshop will be substantive.
Sounds great. Do you have a date?
We're setting that date, Dr. Gales and I, now.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next, Audit Committee Quarterly Report. I'm not sure who's giving that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Superintendent, I'm Lyndon Nelson, and I'm here to give the Audit Committee Report. I have 2 meetings to report to you. We met both on November 16th and January 18th, and I'll cover them in order. We received reports from Bill Nimmens, talking about FTE and the new system with Focus versus Genesis, and how we're better able to protect the student social security numbers and information with the new system. We also received a report from our auditor, Audit on Solar Telephones. That was an internal report, and the findings, which I know were presented to you all on the January 8th Board meeting. We received Mr. Wemberly, Assistant Superintendent for Businesses, discussion of the findings of the FTE audit that was issued by the Auditor General. And I know you've had those reports as well. Ms. Paul presented the 2017-18 Annual Work Plan Status, which is one of the responsibilities of the Audit Committee to review the work plan. And that draft was presented to you all on the January 8th meeting. And then, we moved to the January 18th meeting, where we, we got the opportunity to meet the new CFO, Kim Banks. She introduced herself and told us a little bit about herself and her goals and such. And then, we also had the, the opportunity to meet Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Daryl Jones's new appointee, Mr. Herbert Bailey, and he told a little bit about himself. And then, Ms. Paul announced that Mr. Jay Corbett had submitted his resignation, so that opens up a new position for us from the superintendent. We also had a presentation from Purvis Gray, the District External Audit Committee. That report is not yet prepared for us. We had hoped to receive it in December, but because of changes in staff in the CFO office, and the annual AFR was a little bit late, and then the hurricane delayed. So, there, we, they received their report on the 3rd week of October, and they reported to us that they were about 80% done, and they expected the report to be submitted in a timely manner by the due dates. And then, we received the internal staff report from the Lively Technical Center Audit, which was a management audit at management request. And then, the Audit Committee looked at the findings and the recommendations and what was being done. We also understand that the audit plan was approved, and so, we can move forward with that. And, a long report for you all. The, the next work plan action item was the PTOs, PTA, and booster groups, and the management special request to all district sites. There's been recommendations, which I'll make note of, the appropriateness of change funds at athletic events, online fundraisers, excess student fees, and uniform apparel purchases, and those are all issues that are being covered by the internal audit team. Our next report to you will be May 18th. Our next Audit Committee will be April 26th. And that concludes my report, and I really appreciate you giving us the time to report.
Ms. Resnickson.
First of all, thank you for you and the members of, of the Audit Committee. You're lending your expertise to us, and we're very grateful for your time, your valuable time and expertise. And I guess I just, sometimes, we feel like we're, we're tripping over auditors. We're being audited all the time between the Auditor General and our external auditors and internal auditors, and we have an Audit Committee. Are you comfortable that there are enough checks and balances in place to ensure that if anything were really amiss, that, that there are ample opportunities to get that information to board members, and that we are in, you know, relatively sound shape? It seems to me that's the tone of most of the reports I've seen of late, and I just wanted to get your, not to put you on the spot, but...
No, I do believe that among all the different versions of audits that you receive and by the different entities, and then the reviews of those audits and the reports to the public, everything is highly transparent, and as board members, you have many opportunities to know what's going on. I think the, both the Superintendent and the Committee, and the Audit, Internal Audit Staff themselves make everything as open as possible, and to give you opportunities to respond.
Okay, thank you. That's always what we want to hear. Thank you.
Always. Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Radiology Associates of Tallahassee.
This time, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Kelly Walker to come up and introduce our guests with us from Radiology and Associates, and recognize some, some winners.
Great. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Hannah. Over the past 4 years, Leon County Schools and Radiology Associates has enjoyed a tremendous partnership. Last fall, elementary students participated in the Healthy Kids Art Campaign, which promotes healthy lifestyles. Tonight, we are so fortunate to have 2 representatives with us from Radiology Associates. We actually have the new pediatric radiologist, Dr. Alan Chin, with us, and then, we have their marketing representative, Manny Sivadanes, with us. So, if they would come forward, they have a special presentation.
I'm Dr. Alan Chin, and as Kelly said, I'm the newest addition to Radiology Associates of Tallahassee, specializing in pediatric radiology. You may know Greg Albright, I'm replacing him. He recently retired. So, thank you for having us host this wonderful event again this year. I'm pleased to present this $15,000 check to Leon County Schools. The theme this year was expanded from healthy lungs to encompass healthy lifestyles. All Leon County 3rd through 5th grades, our classes were invited to create inspiring artwork to reflect upon and encourage healthy habits, such as tobacco abstinence, healthy eating, exercise, healthy relationships, and respect for our environment. A record of 19 schools out of 24 participated this year, and I would like to take a moment to thank our sponsors. This event would not be possible without them. Our silver sponsors include Tallahassee Pulmonary Clinic, Florida Cancer Specialist, Tallahassee Neurological Clinic. Our bronze sponsors, Tallahassee Primary Care Associates, Dr. Ziana and Michael Firstoffel, Dale Orenhardt Chevy, which is a new, who is a new sponsor this year. And then, our additional sponsor, First Commerce Credit Union, also another new sponsor this year. All sponsor logos are included in the calendars on school posters as permanent reminders of their contributions. When you meet or visit any of these sponsors, please thank them personally. Proceeds are divided evenly, and checks are written directly to the art programs of each of the 19 participating schools. Last year, each school received $700, which our teachers used to purchase much-needed supplies for their programs, and also prepared to participate in next year's competition. This year, each school will now receive $750, so congratulations to all.
Superintendent Hannah, if you could come up front, and we'll take a picture. Thank you.
You want to be in the picture?
I'm going to call the star artist up in just a moment, and then, we're going to take a group picture, because we've got to meet our stars.
Photo bombing that picture.
Okay, so, the cover artwork was done by Vivian Mucharusa of the School of Arts and Sciences, art teacher Heather Light. Is Vivian here tonight? Okay. January and April's artwork, Jordan Johnson and Grace Carrington from WT Moore Elementary School. Principal Carrie Anderson and art teacher Jason Matt Millen. You will come forward, please. And then, we'll take a group photo at the end. February's entry, Katerina Nusian from Springwood Elementary. Principal Tina Austin and art teacher Samantha Sanchez. Homeroom teacher Kristy Owen. For March, Claire Wasson from Kate Sullivan Elementary School. Principal Michael Bryan and art teacher Emily Westfall Crouch. May's entry, Emma Murray from Roberts Elementary School. And we have Assistant Beverly, Assistant Principal Beverly Carrison and art teacher Deborah Menikoff with us tonight. June's entry, Talon Owens from Seeley Elementary School. Principal Demetria Clemmons and art teacher Angela White. July and October's entries, Casey Hebenthall and Sophia Ferguson from Buck Lake Elementary School. Principal Billy Mallard and art teacher Sonya Metdowell. And the next 3 entries, all from Hawx Rose Elementary School, August, September, and November, Tanya Pahuja, Shao Shan Ma, and Audrey Rivas. Principal Evie Friend and art teacher Angela White. And last, but certainly not least, Isaiah Gill from Gretchen Everhart. Principal Jane Floyd Bullen and art teacher Judy Jaco. And, I would like to take just a moment to personally thank Judy Jaco. She has been phenomenal. She was the one that served as the liaison between Radiology Associates of Tallahassee and all the art teachers, and she really, her coordination was excellent. So, thank you so much. And then, a big thanks to Radiology Associates of Tallahassee, and then, all the other sponsors for making this possible. It's just been a phenomenal partnership, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Congratulations. [applause]
Kelly.
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 He's not doing there, but he's just like everywhere.
You already made it to our house.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Tell Dr. Get all the things.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Take care.
Thank you.
I kind of miss not having Dr. Ginaldi here tonight. You know, he always tells the funny stories, the story about when he, remember, he said he used to smoke when he was a young boy, and how he tries now as his life mission to warn children of the dangers of smoking, and to rid themselves of tobacco use. Can't remember his name, Rocco, Rocky, Rock, Rock something. Kelly would know.
How do we get the calendars? Who gets the calen, how do we?
I'm just saying, you can go ahead.
Well, I mean, like, what I meant was, programmatically, how are they distributed? I guess the people that know are now out the door.
Okay, well, we're very proud of those students, and we're going to move on to persons to be heard. Would you like to announce them? Yes, Madam Chair, we have 4 speakers that don't appear to be speaking as to a specific item. We're going to start with Carlin Towles, Senior.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Towles. If you could give us your full name and address for the record, and you'll have 3 minutes.
907 St. Louise Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Superintendent Hannah, always good to see you. It was a pleasure to see you in the MLK March yesterday. Even though I didn't see some of the other board members still, I know that you all participated in some other MLK events, and thank you all for all that you do. To you, Mr. Jones, my first time seeing you on the board since being, you know, installed. I wonder if you can recall when I saw you in the Publix on O'Keller Road, my wife and I say that it was your time, when you was running for election. So, we see that, you know, it was evident that it was your time, and congratulations on your achievement. All right? So, I have just a couple of things I want to present. I want to say also to the Superintendent, thank you for, and I know we have a good report. Thank you for the job that you did in helping Principal Connor at Pine View Elementary. She had a great concern. We all know that Pine View is also a Title I school. Her concern was about pupils in the Levy area and not being able to catch a bus. It affected their student enrollment, especially when it rained, it was even worse. But, on dry days, absenteeism was very big. So, we thank you for implementing that bus, and Mr. James Holiday is proud to be the driver of that route, to be able to appease those parents. So, thank you for that, and we do appreciate it. I have a slight dilemma I want to share with the board tonight. Usually, when I come, it's not to complain or gripe, but I feel the need to share this. I understand protocol, I understand transparency. And I had a situation at Cox Compound where I went through my, we changed that title from a supervisor to a project manager. So, our project manager asks the leads, which is what I am, along with others, to periodically check the compound, et cetera, and things like that, to make sure drivers and assistants are doing their job. So, on this particular occasion, I did, and the protocol is to, first of all, write it on the situation form. Secondly, do a video request, which those 2 things I did do. And I did that prior to the end of the year, 2018. So, I followed up, once we came back in 2019, to see if I would get some type of response from that project manager, which I never did. So, of course, I emailed him again to see, had the video been downloaded, and couldn't get any response. So, I talked with Ms. Millie Mathis, which is one of the supervisors, and asked her, why had the video not been downloaded? And so, she said, well, it happened, and I, and I was advised to tell you that you couldn't look at it. So, of course, that didn't sit well with me. Not only am I lead bus driver, I'm also the president of our local TNT union.
Time, your 3 minutes are up.
Thank you all very much, and hopefully, I get the opportunity to follow up on this great concern.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well.
The next speaker is Misty Cash. If you could give us your full name and your address, and you'll have 3 minutes.
Yes, my name is Misty Cash, 4624 Scotthorne Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303. I'll let the board members take a look at those, and I can send them electronically. I am, standing at this podium brings back a lot of memories, a lot of amazing memories, actually. And so, a $15,000 check presentation is a hard act to follow, but I'm going to try. So, I'm not familiar with everyone on the board now. It's changed a lot in the 14 years, I think, I've been gone. But, I am the Southeastern Regional Representative for Random Acts. We are an organization that is global. Our sole mission is to promote kindness in the community, whether it's holding a door for someone, buying a cup of coffee for the person behind you, giving someone a compliment as you pass them on the street, which today is National Compliment Day, so thank you for the great job that you're doing, by the way. But, part of the reasons that I was drawn to Random Acts is there is a program called Class Act. It is for schools, and you're...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you as well.
The next speaker is Misty Cash. You could give us your full name and your address and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Misty Cash. 4624 Scotthorne Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303. I'll let the board members take a look at those and I can send them electronically. I am, standing at this podium brings back a lot of memories, a lot of amazing memories, actually. And so, a $15,000 check presentation is a hard act to follow, but I'm going to try. So, I'm not familiar with everyone on the board now. It's changed a lot in the 14 years, I think, I've been gone. But I am the Southeastern Regional Representative for Random Acts. We are an organization that is global. Our sole mission is to promote kindness in the community, whether it's holding a door for someone, buying a cup of coffee for the person behind you, giving someone a compliment as you pass them on the street, which today is National Compliment Day. So, thank you for the great job that you're doing, by the way. But part of the reasons that I was drawn to Random Acts is there is a program called Class Act. It is for schools and you're already doing it. And we can give you $6,000 for your school or your class or your organization for things that you're already doing. So, I'm providing you that information. I'm happy to come to a principal's meeting, I'm happy to come to a school and talk to club sponsors or teachers or the principal about it. But basically, you just submit a photo, a video of things you've already done, like be the sunshine that I know Childs did, the mural program in the bathroom that I've seen at one of the elementary schools, things that you're already in the community doing, spreading kindness. And really quick, another way that we'd like to maybe spread some money to the schools, part of what we do is we try to carry forth acts of kindness in the community. I'm hoping that you'll see more of us around Tallahassee. That being said, if you know of a student or a teacher that may need a little help with something, they need some clothes for the winter, they need some food in their pantry, we can help fund those things. If there's a class that wants to do a community project to do something good in the community, we can help fund those things. It's what we're here for and we want to help you guys teach the children that kindness doesn't cost us anything. It can be a smile, it can be a gesture, it can be a compliment. So, that's a lot of information in a very small summary, but please let us know what we can do to answer any questions you may have and I've provided my information for you.
Thank you. I believe that Ms. Bowen has a question or was it Mr. Jones?
You have one?
Go ahead, Ms. Bowen.
Yes, I do. First of all, I, board members, I have to tell you that prior to my five o'clock meeting today, I walked in and I saw this person and this person said, "Oh, Ms. Bowen, you don't remember me. My hair is a little grayer now than it was some time ago." And I said, "Well, mine has grown and it has curled up too." And so, it was Misty. And so, Misty, it's good to see you. I just need to thank you for what you did prior to your being here and of course, I remember you.
My pleasure.
And I have many ways that I could use the $6,000 in the Thorpe Street corridor schools, but I want to get started with my act of kindness now because you already know that I'm a hugger, so meet me out front and let's hug, please.
Yes, ma'am.
It was funny how Ms. Bowen kind of dated herself on the board. She goes, "Wait a minute, I remember you."
Yes, I did.
Thank you, you're doing good work.
Thank you.
Yes.
And National Hug Day was Sunday, so we're just...
Mr. Jones?
I wanted to know, beyond the opportunity for schools, can we use the monies that you make available to incentivize volunteerism in our schools by local organizations that may choose to adopt a school, put forth a number of hours, support events, have a genuine, meaningful impact in those schools that they would adopt? Would they qualify as well?
Yes, sir, there are some clarifications. All of that is on our website. There are some things that we can and can't do, but what you're talking about is a great example of the things that we try to do. It is also an option for me, for students that need volunteer hours, they can help me on Random Acts projects and I can give them some volunteer hours as well. But yes, sir, we, it doesn't have to be a school or a teacher, it can be anyone in the community that sees a need for kindness somewhere, a church, an organization, yes, we would love to work with everyone.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question. How are the grants funded?
So, our founder is a person that I'm sure a lot of young people will know. His name is Misha Collins. He is on a show called Supernatural on the CW. That show was run for 14 years and Random Acts was started, his fans wanted to do things that he supported. And so, he founded Random Acts and through fundraisers that Random Acts has globally or donations that the fandom makes, that's how we're funded. And so, every year, we try to up our game a little bit. So, we're trying to spread the love here in Tallahassee, Leon County.
Fabulous, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next person to be heard?
Is Vichal Toussaint.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry if I butchered your name, please give us your full name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
All righty, thank you very much. My name is actually Vichal Toussaint. It was very close, I appreciate that. I want to thank you guys for your time tonight. I'm here...
Give us your full, your address for the record.
I'm sorry about that. My full address is 2909 Reserve Drive, Tallahassee. And the actual zip code, I'm not even 100% sure. I moved here exactly seven months ago from New York, so stay with me with that. But tonight, I would like to talk about education and technology. As an ed tech advocate, I should say, I believe that children are constantly screaming for a new experience. Now, within education technology, I believe that experiential, experiential, there we go, thank you whoever said that, experiential education is a very powerful tool. One thing that I think drives that momentum forward is gamification. Now, if anybody here is familiar with gamification, essentially gamification is taking game principles and intertwining it with things outside of the context of games. Essentially, one good example of that would be, I don't know if you guys have nieces or nephew, but I'm sure you guys heard of the term Fortnite. Essentially, this is a very big gamification of something that I believe is not necessarily too educational. That game essentially is a gamification of essentially war. They add cool colors, cool, you know, explosions, cool guns, things of that nature, which I don't want to bring onto the minutes, but it is a reality that we face. Today, I want to introduce to you guys a alternative, if you would. I created a mobile application, it's free on iOS and Android called Numberlove. Essentially, it's my version of gamification in terms of mathematics. So, I realized that in school, many kids typically don't like math. It's not that they don't like math, but they don't like the experience of how they're told that they must learn math. Again, they're looking for a different experience. What I've done is that I've created this mobile application called Numberlove, which is a, I would like to call a fairly unique way of putting together cognition and arithmetic in one uniform package. With this application, I hope to just introduce it to the board today. I'm currently in talks with Felicia Williams, who is the head of the instructional math department. And we're in talks, I should say, to move this application forward. I just want to have the county, the board, and, you know, the members of the community to kind of just introduce the application to their children, get a feel for it. And then, moving forward, I would like to work very closely with everybody in the community to kind of etch and sketch out a new way for children to learn a very old skill, but in a way that's applicable to them. Education for you and I growing up was very different than it is today. Today, we have to spark a new conversation in order to reach the goals that we truly want to see out of our community. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Yes. One of the principles that I campaigned about was rewarding innovation. This opportunity for developmental play, I don't know if there is an already existing, Mr. Superintendent, method by which we share these types of new innovative teaching tools that can provide a supplement to what we're already providing in the classroom or how we engage or inform parents about this. If there's not an already existing method beyond just what this young man explained, but any opportunity. We used to talk about the issue of the digital divide. Well, smartphones has helped, have helped to lessen that former digital divide. And if he's talking about an app that parents can use, that they can give to their children, a great number of whom are technologically savvy, anything that we would provide a process by which we vet this information and can share that with parents, principals, that they can use as a supplemental tool that teaches, that parents and students can use outside of the classroom, may be worth exploring in a formal context beyond what he's just described, but for others as well, particularly when it's someone who's homegrown.
He's brought in from homegrown. Do you have...
Spell your app.
It's spelled N-U-M-B-A-L-O-V-E. And like a quick tidbit about the spelling of that, it's not actually numberlove, it's numbo-love.
Yeah.
And that is in, it's like a playoff of words, if you would, where if it were that one of you guys are playing this game and it's like two plus two equals five, obviously, we all know that two plus two is not indeed five, but whatever the pressures may have been for you to actually indeed select five, it's a common phrase to say, "Don't worry about it, it's nothing but love," meaning like, "Don't worry, oh, I'm sorry, don't worry, Superintendent Hannah, I won't tell anybody about your unfortunate mishap." Ideally, you know five, two plus two is...
That would be helpful.
Which one?
We won't even go there today, but that's kind of the theory behind the name and the play behind it.
Thank you very much and I'm sure we'll follow up on that.
Well, Jillian, evidently you're already tied in with Ms. Gregory's team, so we're already, yeah, we've had conversations and we'll continue to look for innovative ways to engage our, especially our parents, as we can, you know, all of us have heard, especially with math, right?
Yes.
What is it with math these days? I can't help my child. So, anything we can do that gets the child's attention and their parents, we're all ears.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
You very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is, or the last speaker actually, under this section is Stanley Sims. You could give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Where was this young man when we had to do sunshine math when my kids was in school? My name is Stanley Sims, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. And I am just so blessed to be here because we're talking about innovative ways. And I had an epiphany, I don't have a lot of these, but I think this is a great idea. And Chairman Woods, I really want to thank you for the extra time that you always spend with me because you understand with me, it takes a little longer to get it to resonate. But listen to what I've come up with. We have a council for our district, our student, our title, our audit committee, but we don't really have a council for vocation. But that is a very primary issue. So, it would be very good that we put a council together. I see you nodding your head, so I'm feeling good about this, so I'm going to go ahead and keep smiling. That we put a council together about this, this lively college. We talk about partnerships with CBOs because the two can coexist. There's enough out here to coexist. We bring all of our councils together, we bring our TCC partners together to make sure that there's not duplicate of services. We have our parents there, we have those parents, Ms. Joy Bowen, who you have consistently talked about, our overage kids, they have a representative there at the table. I'm feeling this thing, Superintendent. I like this. This is what we call engaging our community. This is what we talk about when we're talking about thinking outside of the box because unfortunately, we still have a problem here in our community. Individuals are dying. There are people of color today, if that should matter. But while we have just celebrated Martin Luther King, I would be remiss not to share this with you. That Martin Luther King said that character is the great foundation that education is built on. So, we got to have good character and somehow or way, we build that and we tell these kids, no matter what name we call it, you're going to go to a college, we got you. You want to go to a tech school, we got you. We just want to hang out with some people that's laying some bricks, we got you. That's the innovation we need. Look at Ms. Wood, she's smiling because she's proud of me that I came up here and I didn't embarrass nobody, I ain't say nothing wrong and everybody is happy. And I'm looking forward to this board coming back and telling me the good news that they will like for me to chair this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
Right, no more speakers.
Okay, we're going to move to items of consent. Do I hear a motion?
I move the items of consent, Madam Chair.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Bowen, seconded by Ms. Rasmussen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. And I've learned that we move way down the road to 19 under items of consideration. 1901, the superintendent recommends following a public hearing approval of amendments to policy 4600, classification specifications effective January 22nd. And I see Ms. Gregory is coming to the podium, so go ahead. Oh, no, you...
But she's not. Mary, you want to come up? Thank you.
Good evening.
This is the position that I worked with John Hunkiar and Jimmy Williams regarding the, they were hired initially as school aides. We've worked with other school districts to see what their school safety monitors have. We've written this classification. It's been before you and so, we're going to have a hearing tonight and if it is agreed upon, then we will work with PERC and have this added to the LISP contract.
I had asked a question in our documents about salary. Can you talk about that in relation to other aides?
Be happy to, yes. They, this position, because the superintendent wanted to bring these on for this school district, for the school year, we hired them initially as school aides and the school safety monitors are the same pay grade and salary. So, the school safety monitor is a pay grade 35 at 1140 an hour. That school aide classification is exactly the same, the 35 and 1140 an hour. The instructional paraprofessional, which you had asked about, that is actually a pay grade 33 at $13 an hour. So, this is below the instructional paraprof.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As Ms. Nicholson indicated, this item does require a public hearing, so you'll need to open it, see if there are any speakers, and then close it.
I'd like to open it right now for a public hearing. Are there any speakers that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close this part of the hearing. And do we need a motion now?
Yes, you do.
We have a motion?
So, move.
Second. It's moved by Ms. Bowen, seconded by Ms. Striplin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. The next item, 1902, was pulled and I appreciate the superintendent pulling this. I had asked a lot of questions about it and so, we're going to have, my understanding is, the answers at the next workshop and we'll be able to have a full discussion on capital outlay so that we're all understanding and on the same page of what's being funded and so forth. So, thank you, Superintendent, for doing that. 1903, renewal of Unify Assessment and Data Analytics Platform. Ms. Gregory, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, school board members. The superintendent recommends for your consideration this evening, the renewal of the Unify Assessment and Data Analytics online platform in the amount of $119,000. This platform allows, platform allows teachers and staff to create and administer student assessments. It also serves as central repository for our textbook provided assessments. Over 200,000 classroom assessments are given by LCS teachers to students using this platform each year.
Are there any questions?
Not here.
Is there a motion?
We have approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Striplin, seconded by Ms. Bowen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Next one is external operator contract for Oak Ridge Elementary School. We do have a speaker on this and it's Marie Claire Lehman. If she could come up now and give her input, please.
Ms. Lehman, if you could give us your full name and address, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Marie Claire Lehman. I live at 1911 Wahala Court, Tallahassee, 32301. I read about the contract that you're proposing to enter with, or in with Turnaround Solutions and I didn't have a lot of time to research because I only, really it only sort of came on my radar today, which is a little bit embarrassing. But I went to look at the website and I did look at the school grades of the schools that have been helped by Turnaround Solutions in the past. And I noticed that the two elementary schools, one of them is now a D school and one is a C school. I'm sure they've helped other schools, but those are the two that they highlight on their website. And incidentally, their ELA achievement rate is 34% at the D school, 32% at the C school, both lower than last year, than Oak Ridge ELA achievement last year. And I understand the context, I understand the volatility of the grade system, and I understand that this is what happens when we are in for a while and helping and then we can't stay in. And my concern and why I'm here tonight is to talk about the importance of addressing systematic issues and making sure that the improvements that we make last beyond... issues and making sure that the improvements that we make last beyond a few cohorts of students. And I'm not trying to say that there isn't hard work being done by this company and that aren't, that our schools aren't making efforts alongside of these companies when they come in. I'm just very suspicious of quick fixes that don't address the underlying issues like poverty and the shortage of resources to properly compensate quality teaching and keep them in our schools, and the inequity that we talk to you every month when we come up here on behalf of the Title I Advisory Council. And I really know the hard work that Principal Smith has done at Oak Ridge, and I'm sad to think that that would be replaced by other initiatives just because of a school grade. And I understand that you're bound by state law to enter into the contract now. I understand that we're bound by state law to choose a turnaround plan for Oak Ridge in case the school grade is still a D or an F in, for 2018-19. I am very curious to hear how the $310,000 will be allocated. How many years will we be bound by this? Will we be, will it just be a dependent, dependent on the improvement of the school grade? I look forward to hearing more about it, and I'm sorry that you're in this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gregory?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members. The superintendent recommends approval of turnaround solutions for the Professional Services Agreement contract for external operator for Oak Ridge Elementary School. The contract amount is dependent on the school accountability grade for Oak Ridge Elementary School for the 2018-19 school year. It is anticipated that the school grade will be available from the department by June 2019. However, the Florida Department of Education requires that Leon County Schools has a contract in place by January 31st. If the school grade for Oak Ridge Elementary School is a D or an F, the contract amount is for $310,000. If the school grade for Oak Ridge Elementary School is an A, B, or C, the contract amount is for $50,000. The selected organization has a long history of success in Florida schools, specifically as a turnaround principal beginning in 2003, and as a support in the external operator sphere. Activities and services included in this PTSA provide support and focus not only on the academics, but also on efforts to strengthen and support community engagement and parent involvement. In addition, the EO provider, different than most other providers, will be job embedding two full-time staff members on the Oak Ridge campus. So, most of the other EO providers were flying people in for one or two days. This EO provider will be providing partners with us, and that was an important piece of the process when we reviewed the, those who were bringing forward provider contracts. The credentials of this organization include the President and CEO as the turnaround principal at two schools in the state of Florida for over 13 years, institutionalizing student achievement from F grades to C grades, F grades to B grades. As a turnaround operator at the elementary level, there are four elementary schools that have shown improvements overall in points, three of which showed improvements in school grades in Duval County. Three of the five middle schools and combination schools also involved with this turnaround provider increased the school grade. They have brought, their commitment is to bringing in experienced content area directors who lead schools in student achievement, and only those directors who are content area experts who have worked in schools at, already turnaround status are part of their plan. Additionally, they have experience using the current Leon County Schools instructional materials and supplies that are used in other districts around. So, so rather than replacing or placing a different academic initiative in, they will continue to use our instructional materials and supplies. And I can provide you a summary of activities and services, if you like. So, the activities and services provided through this PTSA include professional development activities, horizontally and vertically aligning instruction, structured inquiry-based learning as a pedagogical practice. As I mentioned, support and focus on family engagement and community partnerships, targeted tutoring, standards-based instruction, and again, differentiating itself among most of the other EO provider presentations was that they would be moving staff to Tallahassee to embed them in the Oak Ridge community. Their work in professional learning will include work in summative informative assessments, coaching for improved instruction, data frameworks for student data chats, strengthening and supporting school culture, and improving parent communication, aligning curriculum and instruction, and coaching and modeling personnel development on both, on positive teacher, student, and personnel-student relationships. Again, the cost of the program, if the school is a C or better, we would enter into 50 days of instructional leadership coaching for the 18-19 school year at a cost of $50,000. That would replace the current expended resources that we spend at Oak Ridge for this year, and actually will be a savings in terms of the expenditures allocated. If Oak Ridge is a D or an F, the cost would be $310,000, which includes five days per week for a math expert from August to June and plus 12 days in July, five days with, for an ELA expert, I'm sorry, five days per week with an ELA expert from August to June, and then 12 days in July, and then two to three days of leadership and science expertise from August to July plus 12, I'm sorry, August to June plus 12 days in July.
Do we have some questions?
Yes.
I see a lot of you have questions. I have some questions too, so maybe we'll just go down the line. Ms. Rasmussen?
All right. That's fine. And I want to acknowledge, I do recall that you were going to make a presentation to us at a crowded agenda workshop, and you got put to the end, and it was rushed, and so, I want to start off by apologizing for that. My question has to do with transparency in the selection process. Did the Title I Advisory Council or the DAC not ever see this? And how, who was involved in the selection? And
Sure.
Because at a quick glance, it looks like we went with the least expensive, which I'm not opposed to necessarily, but I am concerned about
Sure.
How
So, the committee was, consisted primarily, completely of district staff. And so, the committee consisted of assistant superintendents for academic services, business services, school management. So, that was Dr. Cox, Merrill, and myself, the elementary education director, professional learning, the directors for school improvement accountability assessment, and then the coordinators for instructional materials charter school, school improvement and testing. We did not bring in DAC or TAC during this process because this is slightly separate from TAC in that this is a school improvement that's associated with a differentiated accountability model. It's not something that would be utilized district-wide. I personally met with the Oak Ridge SAC and the Oak Ridge faculty. So, the Oak Ridge stakeholders, we shared information with, we talked about statute, we talked about the district's position on this compliance requirement, but we did not loop in those two stakeholder groups writ large.
I think anytime we're talking about a Title I school, at least a presentation or something
Sure.
To the Title I Advisory Council is in order.
I appreciate that.
My, my question was going, my first question was going to be the one that she asked, how was this particular group selected and by whom? And I think you've answered that for me. I guess I'm, I'm not clear. I'm reading, I think, two different sets of information, and I do regret that we did not allow enough time for you to provide us with the information that you are, are giving us now. And I know how thorough you are in doing your job, Jillian. I really appreciate that. So, what I guess I don't understand, and I want to make certain that we continue to be transparent here, and that the street committee does not take this and run with it in a different direction than we intended for it to go. You know how that can be.
Ms. Lehman.
So, transparency is important. How long will this particular entity have to be at Oak Ridge? Who decides how long they get to stay? Will staff be losing jobs? I heard you say that people will be embedded. So, talk just a little bit about what it really means to have them come. Now, and I understand that we are in compliance, but to come and nest with us at Oak Ridge, please.
So, let me begin, thank you for the question. Let me begin by saying that we have every confidence that Oak Ridge will be a C. We meet with Dr. Smith and her administrative team at this point every two weeks, and we review not only student data, but instruction. We observe teaching and learning both in, at the student level and in the classroom with teachers to make sure that they're optimizing every instructional minute, that the work that's being undertaken at Oak Ridge is truly profound, and we have every confidence they will be a C. With that in mind, really, what is driving this decision is an intersection between all of the different pieces and parts that are part of school improvement, such as test scores, but also parent involvement and community engagement. And so, the selection, this provider was really the only one that spoke to the importance of community involvement and parent engagement, so much so that the committee unanimously selected this organization as the one to move forward. The second part of your question, I'm sorry, I didn't bring a pen up, but the second part of your question was about staffing and the street committee and concerns. So, the idea is that Oak Ridge would be a C. The lightest, out of all the external operator presentations, the lightest touch was this one, if they are a C. For example, one of the organizations charges $3 million, and regardless of whatever the letter grade is of the school, they would be embedded in your school campus for five years. Obviously, that was not something that we would entertain as a district. And so, we really, we're looking for that really important piece where we want to partner, but we also recognize that we don't want someone to come in and tell us what to do. We don't need, I think, perhaps at the SAC meeting, someone asked me if we were bringing carpetbaggers in. We do not need someone, that's not the approach we want to take. We want a partner with us. We owe, you know, we reflect on practice, and we are, it's part of a continuous improvement model. And so, if we have a partner with us who can sit down and provide us feedback, and we can improve, we are in it to win it because it's not about ego, it's about the children.
Of course.
And so, we are really, so out of all of that, the one, the one provider that emerged unanimously was Turnaround Solutions. Now, separate from Turnaround Solutions is the requirement under differentiated accountability from the state. So, what the state of Florida requires is that any teacher who has a VAM score that is unsatisfactory or needs improvement
VAM score?
A VAM score, which we do not use in our teacher evaluation model, but it's the value-added model that's used by the state to determine teacher efficacy. If a teacher in that model from the state is identified as needs improvement or unsatisfactory, the state requires us to remove that person. And so, that is separate from this issue insofar as turnaround solution, what is before you now. As part of DA, there are these other requirements. As part of this proposal, this PTSA, this contract, we would have to just be in compliance with what the state says. Doctor, it is, Turnaround Solutions has no, wants to build capacity for long-term systemic change at the school. They're not coming in to fly in and move them over, off of the list just for the year, just to get off of the list. They want student, student achievement is at the core of everything they do, and so, they really are about professional development, building capacity at the classroom level, and making sure that all students can learn.
Okay. And I appreciate that. That's a wonderful segue into the second part of my question, I think, here. In researching turnabout, you, you mentioned parental involvement, but you also talked some, what about, well, I don't know that you did or not. So, how will this company address the community needs that this school sits in? I mean, I appreciate, you know, all you're saying, but we all know that students are only with us so many hours per day, and I choose to think that there's some extraneous kinds of things that are happening in the community. So, what particular prescriptions will they be providing to address those needs, which would really led me to my first question of how long are they going to be with us?
Thank you. I'm so sorry. So, this is a one-year-only contract, and so, they would only be with us for a year, as long as the school improvement
Okay.
As, as long as school grades improve, as long as we get out of the differentiated accountability tier-two level. So, different from other EOs who had two-years, three-years, and five-year requirements, this, this company only requires a one-year commitment. So, the work that he would undertake in the spring is outside of the scope of, it's July 1st to June 30th, 2019-2020 school year. I'm so sorry about that. And so, to get to your other question about parent involvement and community engagement, I think one of the, what specifically resonated with us is the, the President and CEO is a principal from Title I schools in Florida. And so, those kinds of activities that he referenced in his presentation included parent engagement evenings, parent engagement activities on the weekends, community involvement, building relationships with partners in the community, pause, all things that Dr. Smith is doing. He is adding staff to support that work. So, he is not replacing the work, and he is not suggesting that it's not being done. He's adding staff to make sure that the work is done even more broadly. And so, the idea is not that, in any way, shape, or form, we are not to suggest that Dr. Smith is not doing that work. She is doing an amazing
Of course, of course.
I mean, I know she brings in lively barbers to help with cutting children's hair before picture day, and reaches out to the community. They would continue to do those kinds of things and then expand on it by adding. So, if there's one or two days, they would have three or four days of that.
So, there's nothing about workshop training or jobs and this kind of thing? That is not what this group is going to be involved in at all? That's not
So, I think when we say workshop training, they'll be working with parents on reading strategies at home, but in terms of jobs and training, like career and tech ed for parents?
Right.
No, ma'am, that is outside the scope of this contract.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you.
To go back to what our school board member, Dee Dee Rasmussen, asked about the engagement with other groups, I happened to be present when you presented to the school advisory council. What I thought was enormously informative about that discussion, they talked about the importance of community engagement. This was the, this was the vendor who best reflected what the school advisory council saw as their values when you and Dr. Smith convened that committee, and I happened to come and visit. So, although they weren't a part of the committee per se, the selection that included entirely district staff, I'm certain, based upon your ultimate selection, that the engagement that you had from, as you described, the best existing stakeholders was ultimately manifest in the selection. So, I applaud you for that. I don't know, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hannah, at what point would be appropriate, but we do have Dr. Smith here with us. And I think that it's also important, particularly because this, we find ourselves at a circumstance whereby we find ourselves in this position where for the first time, I'm certain, that we could possibly have a school under state control. I think that with this current conversation, I think we miss an opportunity if we did not hear from the secretary described, doing enormously impactful things in engagement in addition to what we'll deal with most presently as this contract. But I'd hate for us to forfeit that opportunity to hear from Dr. Smith while she's here. So, I don't know at what point, but prior to our vote, I would like to recommend that, that we allow Dr. Smith to talk about, because one of the things I also was impressed with, Ms. Gregory and with Dr. Smith, when we met, or as they met as a school advisory committee, one of the things that I thought was most impressive was that there was a palpable confidence that they would turn the school grade around, and that it would improve to a C, that through diagnostic testing that they're already doing prior to the exam has already shown them that they're already, well, I don't want to tell it all, but I just thought that that was important, and I'd love for Dr. Smith to also inform the board because ultimately, although, you know, ultimately, this is our responsibility and will be a part of our own collective and individual legacy as a school board. So, after this presentation with your indulgence, I'd love to hear from Dr. Smith.
I'd love to hear from Dr. Smith. Do you want to say something first, Ms. Striplin?
Yes, thank you. I, I, first of all, I want to thank Marie Claire for her words and for, for your sympathy because I am completely frustrated that we're sitting here with this in front of us. I mean, this is not what I signed on for, to turn our schools over to an outside entity. No one can understand the Oak Ridge community better than Jasmine Smith. Where is she? Is she here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there you go. I mean, we, we hear a lot about the turnover in the schools, the administration and the change, and that's one of the, that's one of the fluctuating factors that disrupts that school environment. And I know that Jasmine is here for the long haul, and if anyone can do what needs to happen with that school and with that community, it's the principal that's there now and her team. And I am frustrated that we're in a place where we're, we are forced, again, to do something that we know is not the best thing for our community and for that community. That said, I'm going to try to be positive and think That said, I'm going to try to be positive and think that something good is going to come out of this. But my question is, it was my understanding in the beginning that the contract is required to be put in place in case the school does not become a C or better. But what I'm seeing is that we're, so the companies have found a way to put in that we are now required to pay them and retain them even if the school becomes a C, even if that school becomes an A, we're still out $50,000. Just yes, just yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
But if I could see your point, I think, I think to your point, the idea is that the, and maybe some other comments, the contract is for the school year 1920 to turn it around. However, we all know as classroom teachers, as, we can't just push a group of people in on July 1st. And so what the vendors have said through their proposals is, we need to come in in February, we need to come in in March and observe and see things, and we're going to charge you for that. Turnaround Solutions is not charging us for that. Turnaround Solutions is saying, we're going to come in, we're going to do a needs assessment, we're only going to work with you for the 18, 19 year for that $50,000 to provide 50 days of instructional coaching and support, which when we do, is less than the amount of resources that we're spending there this year. And so that would be very, so that would, she, that the school would continue to receive something for the first year that they're not in DA. So rather than, so oftentimes the complaint that I receive is as soon as the school's a C, you walk away and you don't give us anything. And so the idea is in this model with Turnaround Solutions, different than some of the other providers, is that even, when Oak Ridge is a C or higher, we are not walking around, we are not walking away from, we are not walking away from Oak Ridge. They will receive support for a year at the cost of $50,000 to institutionalize and be systemic about the work that was undertaken this year. And then instead of the district placing somebody there or two or three people there, that company, for want of a better term, we would outsource that to that company to do, and we, and we would move on to other schools. Really because, and, you know, I struggle, this is not something that I have, I have brought forward to the board lightly, it's, it's certainly not a highlight in my professional career, that we have to bring forward an external operator to you. It feels not great on this side of the dais. And the idea is that we receive, I've received lots of feedback, and this provider met that intersection of belief in the community, having walked the walk, and at the same time understanding that we want to institutionalize systemic change and had the lightest touch with the least cost for that first year. Some of the other providers were charging $100,000 or $112,000 for next year, even if they were an A, B, or C. And one provider charged us more for doing, not meeting the required goals. So it's just really kind of a little bit of the Wild, Wild West in terms of what they provide, what the contracts and negotiating through that. And so we really took the feedback, truly the feedback from the school advisory council, knowing the community and the culture at the school, and really tried to suss out, knowing the position I think the board would be in, the best, most, the most complete fit for this piece of the requirements under state law.
And I appreciate, I appreciate, I know that you're frustrated, I think we all are. I don't think there's, I just, I think I was not aware that we were going to be under contract with them regardless of the grade. I was under the impression it was going to be if it didn't improve to a C. So this was a little bit of a surprise to me. That said, I know that Principal Smith will do an amazing job at embracing whoever walks onto her campus with the most positive attitude because that is just the person she is. And we'll see that as, how can we learn and grow from this? And I, I know that we're all going to walk away from this and Oak Ridge is going to be amazing and, and we'll get through it. So I just feel a bit frustrated, but I appreciate your, I appreciate the choice that you guys made.
I'd like to hear from Principal Smith if she's willing to come up. And I had a remark to make, but I'll just hold on that.
Good evening.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jasmine Smith, and each and every day I get the pleasure and honor of serving as principal, proud principal at Oak Ridge Elementary School. It is my honor to work at elementary, at Oak Ridge Elementary School every day, getting to serve over 500 of the best and brightest students in Leon County, partnering with amazing families, and having the opportunity to work towards our ultimate goal of an improved school grade in partnership with some of the most committed group of educators and professionals that one could ask to have the opportunity to work with. Now, in looking at the work that lies ahead as it relates to Oak Ridge, we've had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, to present him with a plan, which is aligned with his strategic plan, which outlines exactly how we're going to work to improve the school grade at Oak Ridge. I do want to take a moment, if I may, to thank Superintendent Hannah as well as his entire cabinet for all the support that we've received as we work to be sure that our school meets its highest, meets its highest potential. So in looking at the work that lies ahead very specifically and thinking about some of what we, some of what we're doing and some of what we're, we're looking to accomplish, excuse me, there are areas of improvement that we've identified, we have a strategic plan in place, as I said, that is aligned with our school superintendent's strategic plan. And simply, we're working to ensure that there are a couple of things that we're doing on a regular basis. That first piece is ensuring that all of our students meet their highest potential, ensuring that the instruction that we provide to students on a daily basis is standards-based, that it's aligned to our standards, and that our students receive the support that they need, whether it be students that are currently performing below grade level, on grade level, or above grade level. We're working to ensure that our teachers on a regular basis receive the appropriate professional development that they need, that we meet with our boys and girls to talk about their data, that we properly engage our community in traditional and non-traditional ways. Our work at Oak Ridge began last year with a simple door-knocking campaign. One of our first acts, the Oak Ridge community, and this was in partnership with teachers, was to go to knock on the door of every student that attended Oak Ridge to ensure that they understood what our goals are, to ensure that we're going to meet our parents and our students where they are, and to ensure that they understand that our doors are always open as it relates to Oak Ridge. Another piece that's been tremendously impactful and tremendously important to us is just the partnerships that we've established, which allows to ensure that our boys and girls meet their goals. So in looking at ensuring that we meet the needs of our students in all aspects, so we have been blessed to have partnerships with FAMU and a gardening program. We've partnered with the FSU and FAMU Engineering Department to sponsor a STEM Day for our students at Challenger Center, where all of our boys and girls in third, fourth, and fifth grade, which are our students that will be tested, were able to go and have an entire STEM Day at the Challenger Center. We sponsored a program called Flex Your Mind Fridays, which was in partnership at one point with WFSU, where our boys and girls were able to participate in coding activities. We've done a complete upgrade of our media center as it relates to professional development. We've been able to send our teachers for professional development, not only onsite, but to the Ron Clark Academy. We've established an Eagles Nest Game Room, which provides incentives for our boys and girls when they're working and doing their best. It's related to academics as well as behavior. Superintendent Gregory, Assistant Superintendent Gregory talked about some of the things that we do, such as making sure that our boys and girls have haircuts when it's time for pictures. We've partnered with FSU to provide dance lessons for our students after school to ensure that our boys and girls that are performing above grade level get as many opportunities to extend themselves as possible through programs like Duke TIP, to be sure that we engage our parents through programs like our STEM Night, Literacy Week, Literacy Night. And we're very proud of a partnership that we have this year, which is going to be extremely important to the improvement of our students, which is a healthy schools initiative, and we're partnering with TMH. So we're working with not only our students, but our families to ensure that they understand the importance of healthy lifestyles, healthy living, and how that impacts students' achievement. And we're doing things with, as a part of this program, as extensive as ensuring that we have appropriate water coolers in, attached to our water fountain, so our boys and girls are able to hydrate themselves throughout the day. So whatever needs to be done, we're working to do it. Whoever's willing to work with us to support our teachers, to support me as the principal, to support our parents and our community and our vision, we're finding a way to make those things happen, understanding that our ultimate goal is to see that all of the needs of the students at Oak Ridge are met, but that, as we said, we get the job done as it relates to our school grade.
Very good. Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
When I was just a candidate and I visited Oak Ridge and was impressed by her great vision for Oak Ridge Elementary School, it was our great pleasure to help her to identify $5,000.
Yes.
What was the name of the program?
The Flex Your Mind Fridays program.
And we were able to find a local business, Figures Communications, who made that investment. And that, and she brings an infectious enthusiasm to the work that clearly translates with those community stakeholders and parents as we identified. And although I use the word carpet baggers at the school advisory committee, I was not talking about these, this particular company we will consider today. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you for your time. And again, I'd like to thank the board, Superintendent Hannah, Assistant Superintendent Gregory, for your support. Beyond that, I have to say again that I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our students, our parents for their commitment, and above all, our teachers for coming to Oak Ridge every day, knowing that we're going to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Ms. Gregory, did you have something else you wanted to add? I see you up with your notebook.
Well, I, but I think Dr. Smith also didn't, sold herself a little short. There is, there are many, many other things that she's also doing, and I just wanted to make sure we recognize those efforts too. Dr. Smith has staff coming in every day and working with students, beginning at 7:45 in the morning through learning labs. So she is working 7:45 to 8:30. Dr. Smith and her assistant principal bring breakfast to the children so they can eat breakfast in the classrooms while they're working on activities that are targeted remediation intervention for students who are in need. Not only that, but they are also doing amazing work with book clubs for the students who are on grade level. So again, they're wheeling breakfast in four days a week to the media center to work with the students, to do on-grade level support and work in ELA activities for the students. We have her develop, her instructional coaches, her teachers are working extended hours during the day to, with student contact time in small group intervention for those students. And Dr., as, what I can say unequivocally is Dr. Smith is probably the most reflective practitioner I've had the pleasure of working with. And when there's a problem of practice, Dr. Smith goes in, she observes the problem, and she identifies solutions, and then works with all different kinds of stakeholders to leverage resources to implement kinds of solutions. And so, again, I would be remiss if we didn't kind of also address all of the things that are happening academically outside of the school day to strengthen and support student achievement.
It's innovation.
It is.
That's great.
It is. And again, it doesn't, there's so much good work being done at Oak Ridge. To bring this item before you this evening is not easy to do because the work that, pound for pound, I would put it up against any work of any principal at any school in the state. And here we are because of state requirements, standing before you, bringing forward this contract so that we commit it to the board as a state by the deadline required.
I wanted to just make one comment along that. At first, I just want to congratulate Dr. Smith and her staff on the passion and the caring you have for our children and the children you serve. And I think everybody on this dais is so grateful, so grateful to you and the work that you're doing, and thank you so, so much. And in a minute, we'll call for the vote, and I'm going to support this because it seems to me like you have done everything you can to get the best company that was available. And, you know, it sounds like it's like of our choices, so I appreciate that. But I do have to say that I am mad. I am really mad that we are being forced to do this. I'm really mad that there are teachers that may be working so hard and the principal sees them working hard, and then they may lose their job because of a VAM score. And I was a principal when we had VAM scores, and, you know, sometimes luck of the draw, a teacher gets some students, and they work so hard, but maybe they just don't make that progress that year. It may not show up for another year on a test. But yet, these teachers are going to be insulted by the fact that if their VAM score isn't correct, they're not going to get to keep their job. And I just think that is so wrong, and I think it's so wrong of the state to cram this down our throats, which is what they're doing. The legislature has, you know, made these edicts, and we're living by them, and we're meeting their deadlines, but I just think it's so wrong to put this much pressure on these children because they feel it. I mean, these teachers are feeling it. And, you know, pressure rolls downhill. And pressure is going to roll downhill here to these children because they don't want to disappoint their teachers. And they, you know, and that is too much for a third child to carry on their shoulders, and they feel it. I mean, they burst into tears, they get sick at school before, because there is too much pressure on the almighty test. And we know that school is so much more than that. And I was really happy to hear Dr. Smith talking about all the extracurricular enrichment things they're doing, because sometimes the pressure is so great, people don't feel there's even time to take a little recess or a time to go on a field trip. And I want the teachers at Oak Ridge and every school in this district to know that that's not what we value, this test score. This test score is just a little snapshot of a moment. And we all know that it reflects many other things than what's going on at the school. Did they have breakfast that morning? Did their parents have to get the light bill paid and they went without lights that night? I mean, that can happen, and it does happen, the day of the test. And so to have all this, casting aspersions on our schools because they didn't, on that day of that snapshot, show what they wanted them to show without measuring any of those other values of the community engagement of, they just say, honey, did you have a hard day? I understand. That's what matters. Because in the end, test scores, you know, if someone asked me what my test score was in the third grade, I don't know. But I do remember my teacher.
That's right.
And I think that's what matters. And so I'm going to vote for this, but I'm mad that we're going to have to spend, you know, maybe $350,000 or so on an outside firm that's going to come and tell us to do exactly what we're already doing. So I wish the legislators and the DOE and everybody would come in, help those families support what they need so that the test scores wouldn't be a problem anymore. And so I'm sorry to be on a soapbox about this, but I've been mad about school grades since 2000, and I can just see the harm and the detriment it has done to our school system. And again, it's downhill. And I don't think a lot of those people that are passing these rules understand the damage it has done to our schools. So that's my soapbox. And if somebody else wants to say something, that's fine, then I'm going to call for the vote.
Yes, ma'am. If I just may add this one additional observation, all of our Title I schools and their leadership and their teachers are all working equally hard. I think that we need to make certain that we provide, we, I don't know what's the method, this is my first year, I have not been a part of the budget process, part of the strategic plan. However, we need to make certain that where we are right now vetting this current contract, that next year, that it is not another Title I school who finds themselves in this same set of circumstances. We identify these schools as priority schools. Today, we're talking about Oak Ridge because Oak Ridge's contract is before us. I don't know what is the method. Again, I readily admit that I am new to this conversation. This is only my fourth school board meeting. But we must take time as a school board in cooperation with the superintendent to address this matter so that we don't find ourselves next year looking at the same type of contract again. So there are mitigating circum, I am convinced, I have said this many times before, the intellectual capital found in our school district is exception equal to any found anywhere in the state, if not the nation. But we need to harness that intellectual capacity so that we do not find ourselves at dealing with this exact same contract. at dealing with this exact same contract, this exact same set of circumstances annually.
Mr. Jones, if I can add one thing to get to rant about, but I'm going to bring it up right here, and that's the fact, that the state gives us what we call SIG money for schools that are on the DA list. And we have a number of schools, how many, Ms. Gregorys?
Six.
Six schools that are on the DA list. And so the state sees fit to give a good bit of money, a couple hundred thousand dollars to each school, to do the exact things that we need to do. And so, you know, not only is Oak Ridge in that situation, but we have other schools, and I won't name them all right now, but the right now, is as soon as that grade goes up, which we know it can, if you have the proper support that that money provides, that money's going to disappear. And yes, you are right, we will be right here at this dais next year with another school, because the money's going to get removed, and then the grade is going to drop. So my thing is, if the state understands you need extra money to help these schools, what changes next year? Nothing. The same students are coming. We need, as a board superintendent, as citizens, we need to demand that if this money is important for the schools, that it continue to come and not be ripped away as soon as the letter, because the letter grade will go back down. I mean, you need this kind of support, fundamental support, at these schools to maintain this. And so they recognize it by giving it to us, and then as soon as we do what they ask, they take it away. So, you know, this is, this is going to be something I think we need to address and keep speaking about with the legislature. They see fit to help us this year, they need to help us the next year and the following year, or we'll be back in the same place. Superintendent?
Before you vote, I don't want to belabor this any longer than we have to, because I'm sick of talking about it. But one of the first appointments, I mean, just the whole thing, the appointments I made was to appoint Dr. Smith, the principal at Oak Ridge. And Jasmine, I don't care what happens this spring, that was the best decision I've ever made. I mean that. I really do. I've been to that campus on numerous occasions, and I walked out the other day with Chris, and I said, if people only knew what was going on in this school. And this is like choosing between a punch in the face and a, and a knee in the stomach and a kick in the shin. And we're choosing the kick in the shin. And I begged the former secretary, the commissioner, and I'll beg this one, that there has to be a better way, to have to choose between shutting the school down or turning the school over to a private charter company, or paying 300 or 400 or half a million dollars to an external operator, there has to be a better way. We are right now, obviously, look back in the back, might as well be a member of our staff, people from the Department of Education that are embedded at our schools, and that we're instituting best practices. And if they want us to feel an ounce of pain, then okay, we'll feel an ounce of pain. Let me pay their salaries. Let them have direct contact back with the department, because I'm not sure even the Department of Education believes in this external operator program. Matter of fact, I'm convinced that they don't. And so we're going to make the best of a bad situation, and, but I'm, you know what? I don't want you to feel that pressure, Jasmine, and I don't want your children to feel that pressure. It is what it is. And unfortunately, unfortunately, Mr. Jones, we may be back here next year with another school under similar situations. Mr. Towles mentioned earlier about us picking up children to go to Pineview that live within miles. We don't get any funding for those children. But you know what? If we don't pick them up, they're not going to go to school when it's cold, they're not going to go to school when it's raining. Some of these principals, and not just Dr. Smith, are up against overwhelming odds. And I'm just, we're just blessed to have them as part of our team. And so I, Jillian came to me in August and said, Rocky, we have to have this talk. And I said, I'm not going to do it. I'm not having it. She came back in October, and said, part of this might be my fault. I'm not doing it, Jillian, I don't want to talk about external operators. I'm not going to have that conversation about shutting the school down or paying all this money. And she said, if you don't have this, the next governor is going to remove you. So here's where we are. So I'm recommending the kick in the shin. And Jasmine, again, no matter what happens, we love you, we love your school, we love your community, and we're here to support you, because we believe in you. All right?
Do I have a kick in the shins motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Striplin, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. Thank you for the work you've done to get the best that we can. Appreciate it. Okay. That was important discussion.
Absolutely.
I'm moving down to superintendent's comments. Twenty-two oh one, do you have any more?
I just want, I owe a thank you to Kathleen Rogers. About six months ago, we met with folks from the NAACP, and they asked us if we were active role in the annual MLK celebration breakfast that we've had traditionally in this community for decades. And I turned to Dr. Rogers, and she shook her head that we can do this. And she did. Her and her team were fantastic. I mean, that event Friday went off without a hitch. We recognized some kids, and it's important that we do it. We talk a lot about what makes Tallahassee an all-American city. Well, that's part of it, that we can come together as a community with different governments from different neighborhoods, and sit together and break bread as one. And Kathleen, I just want to say thank you. You paid, we paid the bills, which is the best part, but also to look at those kids and to say, okay, it's your turn to lead, as the dreamers and the doers of the Leon County School System in the state of Florida and in this country. So I'm proud of our efforts and accomplishments, and as long as I'm superintendent, and y'all are on this board, I know we'll continue to support the honor of Dr. King and all of his work in the United States.
Absolutely. Thank you. New issues, school board meeting locations, school board member Darrell Jones?
Yes, I brought this up, I believe it was in an agenda review meeting, that I'd like for us to consider, at locations across our respective school districts, having our school board meetings there. I think that location, some great exposure, provides a living, breathing civics lessons for those students who are there. I think it also provides us with opportunity to engage, most specifically, with the stakeholders who are found at that school. I think you'll notice, since we mentioned it at our last agenda review meeting, is taking up the same matter, about taking their city commission meetings outside of chambers. I think it provides us with an opportunity to provide, as we discussed a great deal tonight, about community engagement. It's nothing wrong with the location here, but if we can have our, if we can show at work in our respective school districts, it provides a context whereby the local media will be able to see our schools. Imagine that school that serves as our host, no different than the Board of Governors meeting, that travels across the entire state of Florida to each of its respects, providing opportunity to shed a light on those schools, on those universities. I think with the technology that currently resides at a variety and a number of our campuses, we could take this show on the road, most specifically, take this show on the road whereby our students and our parents might be most directly engaged. I think it was something I'd like for us to consider.
Thank you.
I have another point that I'm also, would like for us to consider. On January 11th, there was a story done on WTXL about what they described as the racial disparity in punishment. And I wanted to know, does the district, do we plan to respond to that? My phone has run off the hook since we had that, that news story aired, and they described numbers as great as a 4.4 difference between how minority children are disciplined. I don't know if those numbers that were reported on the six o'clock news are accurate, but if they are not accurate, then we need to refute them, and if they are accurate, then we need to have a plan of action to address it. I'm, I've, I have heard from our community, this is a civil rights matter that can easily just be ignored. We need to respond to it, to say that it's accurate or it's inaccurate, but right now, it's now being circulated and described as a truth. And if that is not the case, we need to say that publicly. So I don't know what would be the best method by which we publicly provide a response to our community on that, but there are parents, there are, there are parents and stakeholders in our community who are concerned about the issue. I don't know if we do respond in a workshop or a public notice, however, that's what has been reported on the six o'clock news, and I think we have to respond to it.
We can certainly do that, Mr. Jones. And if Ms. Bowen's been on this board long, we've had these discussions on numerous occasions, and we'll continue to have these discussions, and look for ways that we can address some of these issues and some. I went to, Ms. Striplin and I were at the Children's Services Council meeting the other day, and they were reporting on numbers of juveniles in the, in the community that have been arrested. And those numbers mirror what's happening in our school system. So I would, I would dare to say that it's not simply an issue in Leon County schools, it's an issue in only our community. But yes, we are amenable to have those conversations, to talk about what's going on in our school system, and things we're doing to, to address this issue.
All right. So what, what happened, so if that is the case, how and when?
Jess, can you?
How and when? So we have a-
Workshop it? Do we, I mean, what's the method by-
We can workshop it, we can put it down as part of our retreat, and issues, as far as our retreat, I believe they were each going to bring two issues. Each of you would bring two. If you want early childhood and this to be your two, you can certainly bring those, and the other four would bring two as well. So we, right now, I know Dr. Gale, through the, for the next week and a half, we're worried about our SACS accreditation that happens every five years, so we're so kind of focused in on that, locked in on that. And I know in February, once we have our February meeting, we'll look to set a retreat date. So I would say, you know, by the, by the spring, we would have this conversation at the workshop.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I simply wanted to echo my support and concern about the moving of the school board meeting from this site, should we get to that place. And, you know, it has been brought up over the years that perhaps that could happen, and we had some drawbacks that caused us not to, but if there is in place now the opportunity for that to happen, then I will once again offer right away Riley as the next place that we go to hold our off-site site for the school board meeting, for all the reasons that you stated, Mr. Jones, as I've been stating all along, to do that. And of course, to continue to talk about the expulsions and suspensions of our students as an ongoing concern, just to let the public know that we are still transparent in what we're doing. This information we need to share occasionally, so that the public knows. Some people know, put it out there. And the final thing that I wanted to say, I thank you inadvertently skipped over continuing concerns from board members.
I apologize.
It's all right, we got your back. I just would like to say that on February the 23rd, District Five will be presenting the second forum along the Thorpe Street corridor to discuss the state of education at the District Five schools. We will be inviting the community. We will probably go into a workshop mode for all of those folk who showed up last time. We now will have those topics, and we will have information on the website of what we have been discussing and what we will discuss. I am in contact, Mrs. Superintendent, I've discussed this with you, with Dr. Small, to hold this at possibly RAW. So we will go from there and just see, but I just needed to put that out there. Of course, board members, you are, you choose to come, I think we have to notify the public that you may be coming, so do that. I'm just really excited about it. The first workshop was outstanding, and so we're continuing that. That's it.
I'm going to be so brief. But I just want y'all to know, and I shared this with superintendent, I don't like it when we don't, before they come, and we go, well, I didn't hear anything about that. For a while now, the Tallahassee Board of Realtors has been kind of engaged in conversation with us about how can we go, we tour, talk about visiting some schools, they're, had some questions about some school zones, and why the grades were bad, and blah, blah. So it's been a long-going conversation. Here under their new president of the board, Lee Chapin, they're entitling it Year of the Child. And so it kind of fell upon a timely month, where Principal for a Day is coming up. So we had a meeting, and the Tallahassee Board of Realtors is challenging their membership base to do Principal for a Day, but not just stop there. And hopefully, we may have one at Oak Ridge. I went and shadowed Gisele Marsh when you were at RAW, and learned, I told them, wear your tennis shoes, and get ready to walk fast. But not only that, they've also said, all right, they're challenging their membership on February 5th to do it, but they've also even set up a follow-up meeting. So we're hoping out of it comes conversations that they probably have never seen or been to. But not only that, how can then maybe my realty company, or the businesses we interact with, then meet the needs of the principal? You shared something about, I think, the $5,000 that comes out of, you know, a company that wants to help. So we're hoping that this becomes a much broader conversation, but a group of people that has not been engaged with us before. Yeah, so just be on the lookout for that, in case, in case you hear something. And if you are tied with any realtors, please tell them to do this. Please, I've already called mine and said, do this, and she was like, absolutely. So challenge your friends to do that, if they're in that group, or any business owners, but I'd love to see every school have a Principal for a Day.
Ms. Striplin, I really like that idea for lots of reasons, because I think that there are some thoughts, that there are certain segments of the community that knows nothing about other segments. And to put those folk who are going to be selling homes to individuals coming into our community, I really do think that that's a great start at, 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 thank you, I like that.
So that's just a good segue for my comment, and that was, and Ms. Edwards mentioned it earlier, she came to the event that we held, we called it Pre-K to College, and we held it at Conley Elementary School, and it was for the express purpose to have the, which are mainly the Southwood residents and people around there, to come and listen to the programs, not only at Conley, but also at Fairview and Rickards. And we had a really good turnout, and I think there were probably some people that thought nobody would show, but they did, and part of that's the success of marketing it and doing some advertising. It was a really productive night and a really good model that we can use for other schools, because people do want to know, you know, all the way up, when their kid goes to kindergarten, what's going to happen in middle school and high school, and we really need to try to break down some of the mythology, that there are some good schools in Tallahassee and some bad schools. And I think the Realtors, they did put this event in their newsletter, which I appreciated. It actually sort of spawned the idea from a meeting with some realtors, and so we, this is a community effort, and breaking down mythology and stereotypes is a big job that we have ahead of us, and so I'm all for this, this movement that we're trying to get going, warming the community about what great schools we have. With that, are there any other concerns?
Other concern, just an announcement.
And then announcement?
Leadership Tallahassee, for all you Leadership Tallahassee grads, will be at Oak Ridge the first Thursday in February, as a part of Education Day, at Oak Ridge and Lively, both in District Three.
And God be, God be that day, too.
Boy, don't you dare leave out the Thorpe Street corridor.
Yeah, right, I got you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
Are we supposed, with school choice, this information is for later on, is that right? This is just for reading right now, it's just that, okay, thank you.
It's just an information item, I'm sure Jamie will give an update as we get towards the middle part. How many applications thus far?
Close to 1,400.
1,400 applications since January the seventh.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. There you go. Welcome to her world. Loving my job, Jamie Holloman.
With that positive note, mentioning Jamie Holloman, the most positive person in the school district, asked that the-